Welcome to the May 18th Troy City Council Meeting. We request if you have a cellphone or electronic device that you turn it off. It has an effect on our equipment, so please do so for the duration of the meeting. Thank you. This evening, we are pleased to have with us Pastor Randy Vincent of the Bridge Community Church to give our invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Uh-oh, I thought he was here. Pastor not present? Then our procedure is we'll ask our Mayor Pro Tem, Martin Horlak, to do the invocation for us.
Thank you, Mayor. And let us bow in reverence to our Lord, and we thank the O Lord for bringing us all together this evening in service to the community. As we work through decisions, may we keep your will at the center of our hearts, and may we keep our fellow man and woman in our thoughts as we discern the best decisions for the residents of Troy. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Martin. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Braddamis?
Mayor Schelling.
Here.
Councilwoman Rupel Chmenee.
Here.
Brumfield.
Here.
Eisenbacher.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Horlak.
Here.
Kerwin.
Here.
Forum present. We begin this evening with a certificate of recognition presented to Linda Theophold for Homes for Our Troops, and then after that, we will have our museum manager, Lorraine Campbell, do a presentation of the development plans for the Troy Museum and Historic Village. So I'll go down to the front for the presentation, and I see that Linda's here. This is a surface commendation, and it says, "Whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Troy wishes to express on behalf of the city their appreciation to Homes for Our Troops in recognition of outstanding service to the community, and whereas as a nonprofit organization founded in 2004, Homes for Our Troops is strongly committed to helping those men and women who have selfishly given to their country and have returned home with serious disabilities and injuries. And whereas the organization assists severely injured servicemen and women and their immediate families by raising donations of money, building materials, and professional labor, and then coordinating the process of building a new home or adapting an existing home for handicap accessibility. The finished home is then given to the veteran by Homes for Our Troops, striving to welcome them home with honor and respect. And whereas through these efforts, Homes for Our Troops has furthered those ideals that contribute to a better community. And whereas Homes for Our Troops sponsored their sixth annual Veterans fundraiser in Troy on May 9th to raise money for their worthwhile organization to honor local injured veterans. Now therefore resolved that the mayor and city council, being the duly elected voices of the citizens of Troy, express the city's appreciation and recognition for the service of this distinguished organization. Be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Homes for Our Troops as a lasting expression of the city's gratitude and appreciation for its contribution to the betterment of the city of Troy, Michigan, and presented this 18th day of May 2009." Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you very much.
I'm sorry I was not able to go to the event because when I did attend, it was always wonderful and so moving.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. I just wanted to share with everybody, we had our sixth annual fundraiser a week, two Saturdays ago here in Troy, and we're raising money for a young man whom we're going to be breaking ground on his home later on this summer. We have a committee that is now in search of land and at our fundraiser here in Troy. Even given the state of the economy, we raised almost $40,000. So I am truly gratified not only by that, but also by this award. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for all of that.
This evening, I have a progress report for you from the museum expansion team. And that team includes members of our staff at the museum and other city staff members, the heritage campaign committee, representatives from the historical commission and the historic district commission, and our architectural team, which is headed by Hopkins Burns Design Studios. As you know, our museum expansion was stimulated by the donation of the Niles Barnard House by Harriet Barnard back in January of 2005. And during the last four years, our group has been very busy. They have purchased two lots to provide land for the expansion, and they have retained the architectural services of Hopkins Burns Design Studios to do their development plans. In the next few weeks, very quickly, we will bring to city council for your approval a new gift agreement for a wonderful 1859 timber frame barn that meets our criteria for size and architectural style and condition. We're very excited about it. We will also take our draft site plan to the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission for their review and recommendations and approval, followed by a more formal and detailed presentation to you. In the meantime, what we wanted to do was show you our draft site plan and explain how it addresses the following priorities that the museum expansion has set. As they met, they decided these were their goals. Number one, to improve safe vehicular and pedestrian traffic flow to the museum through a single new entry. Two, to relocate and rehabilitate the historic Niles Barnard House and the 1859 barn, adhering to the Department of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. We are very cognizant of the fact that we are a historic district. Three, to incorporate environmentally sustainable or green technologies wherever it is feasible and appropriate, so that we can effectively partner with Oakland County, who is interested in using the museum as a community laboratory for sustainable technologies. This excites us as we're able to look at both the 19th, 20th, and now the 21st century and man's relationship with the land, and how he has developed technologies to improve his life and retain his relationship with the earth. And then to improve and expand our opportunities for interpretation through expanded exhibits in our new spaces and expanded programs for the public. And finally, to provide parking and visitor services that ensure an outstanding curb-to-curb experience for all the patrons that visit the museum. What I'd like to do now, you have a slide that's coming up that Mark Stymanek is going to help me with. Push the right button. Thank you, Mark. Oh, no! On your slide, you can see in green is the property that was purchased by the Historical Society. It includes two parcels, 109 Lang Street on the north and 100 West Waddles on the south. On the site plan here again is that new property. The site plan shows, number one, the new location for the Niles Barnard House, which will be located over the footprint of the house that used to stand on that site at 100 West Waddles Road. By placing the Niles Barnard House here, we retain its historic relationship with a road as it stood facing Liver Noise, now it will face Waddles. Number two, it fits or is at the same location as the other streets on Waddles Road to the west of the museum, and it increases visibility of the museum, makes the museum a more prominent presence on the corner. The next is the historic barn. The historic structure, the 35, 30 by 40 foot barn, is highlighted in yellow. We place it here and add a new visitor's center to it, which is highlighted in green. That structure roughly sits over the present location of the log cabin. The barn with the Niles Barnard House creates a farm stud, which is a representation of Troy's architectural heritage and past, and allows us great opportunities to interpret that key part of Troy's history. The new visitor's center, which is outlined in green, also provides that entryway or portal to the village, that one common entry point. This enhances security for the buildings and the artifacts that we have, as well as increases safety for the visitors coming into the village. The plan also includes for an addition at the east end of the 1927 Township Hall. That addition includes a new stairwell and an elevator to service all three levels of that building. Some of you may know that there is a wonderful jail cell in the basement. We'd like to include that in interpretation. We'd like to use the upper level, the historic council chambers for archival storage, and the main floor for galleries, both permanent and rotating, and possibly look at the Pioneer Room as a genealogy center where our diverse community can search for their roots. In order to locate the barn and visitor's center at the location outlined involves moving the log cabin, and we'd like to move it to the northwest corner of the property where the house at 109 Lang Street stands now. This provides the log cabin with its own sort of enclave, if you will. It is out of the timeline with the rest of the buildings on the green, represents a much earlier era in Troy's history. This gives it a little setting all of its own with a beautiful backdrop of spruce trees, but still close enough to the green that it can be part of our educational programs. By relocating these buildings, we also create three zones for interpretation. The Niles Barnard House and the farm stud, the cabin and Caswell House represent the residential heritage of Troy and how people and their families changed over time. The school and the store, the print shop, wagon shop, church, and parsonage represent the commercial development in Troy and allow us to focus on that. You'll also notice that our architects have indicated we should move the gazebo down to that end of the green. It's much more a commercial structure that would be found in a town setting than located close to our residences. That also creates a much larger green space, which allows us more flexibility in creating programs for the public. And finally, the third zone is the old 27 Township Hall, which would be permanent museum galleries, which we very much need. The other aspect that the site plan allows is increased parking to service our increasing visitor numbers. The parking along the front, in front of the visitor's center, allows a new drop-off zone where children especially can be dropped off safely and enter the building without mixing with cars coming and going. This is very important to us. Expands the parking across the front of our site, creates an additional parking area behind the church. This would be conditional parking for weddings and events that occur in the church, and also creates a bus turnout area on the north side of the green along Lang Street, so that once children are dropped off, the buses can move to the north end of the green, maximizing parking available to the public coming in for programs. We also have increasing amounts of late afternoon programming taking place about 2:00 as kids are leaving, so children could exit to the north of the green right to the bus as more traffic is coming in the main entrance to the south. Built into that bus turnout area is overflow turf parking, which can be used for special events. In a nutshell, that is a very generalized overview and report of the heritage campaign. Even in a time when most projects are pulling back, pulling in their horns and saying, "We just can't do this in this economy," I can report to you that these people remain fixed on their vision, dedicated to raising the funds necessary to bring their vision and ours to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Campbell at this time from council? Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
I'm curious if there's any consideration for a future expansion in the plan, or is this the limit?
As far as I'm concerned, I don't think the museum wishes to grow much farther. One of the things that the heritage campaign is very aware of is that we are not an essential service to the city, that we provide an amenity to our community, and to demand more services than necessary would not be appropriate. And so we look at the size of the community. We are already recognized in the museum community as an outstanding, outstanding cultural destination. Most museums say they can't touch the services that we provide, so I would not feel that it would be appropriate to grow any larger. We do look on just trying to finish off what we have started and then to work very hard to provide the best programming available. And I think looking at the sustainable technologies that we wish to incorporate puts us way out ahead and gives us a lot of meat to chew on in the next decades.
Are there any other questions for Mrs. Campbell at this time? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Well done. I think that it is in line with projections that were made quite a few years ago about what would happen at the site, and I personally tend to agree with you about this being the ultimate size of the museum site. One of the things that it is, is the gem, because it's not trying to be as big as Greenfield Village or anything like that, but offer things for, from our community from a time period that we want to preserve for future generations. And I think that it's been well thought out. Our next item is a rezoning, a public hearing, and it is a rezoning application for the Harlan Shopping Plaza, which is on the north side of Waddles, west of John R. and Section 14. And the request is from B1 to B3, and Mr. Miller will present for staff before we open the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you know, this is a public hearing. It is a rezoning request for a approximately 1.29 acre piece of property located in Section 14 of the city. B1 to B3 request, north side of Waddles Road, and it is west of John R. On April 14th, the planning commission recommended approval of the rezoning request. The subject property is relatively small. It's currently an existing strip center, and it is zoned B1. And the property owner would like to expand the potential range of uses in the subject Initially, the petitioner considered a rezoning to B2 or B3, but then in writing said that they preferred that they would like to have it, the request, just to B3. And what that does is it opens up to the full range of retail uses, which could potentially be permitted. This is designated as neighborhood node F in our current master plan, and this node allows for high-density residential in combination with residence, limited office, and retail. As we all know, that our master plan was approved in 2008, and much of our zoning orders have provisions from the 70s. The current zoning order does not promote or implement many of the concepts which are in our current master plan. However, we have found that it is consistent, the rezoning request is consistent with the master plan in that it opens up the potential uses which potentially could occur at that location, so city management is recommending approval concurrent with the planning commission in this case. With that, it's relatively simple request. I would note that the surrounding land uses include a strip center to the east, while there is single-family residential to the north and to somewhat to the west after a very skinny adjacent piece of property, which is unusual. To the south, there are business rezonings and office. And then, of course, on the other side of John R., there is some attached residential on the north side, and business zoning classification is right on the corner, on the southeast corner. With that, I would just remind you that the planning commission recommended approval of the B3 zoning request. Management does concur with that, and I'll answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Mr. Miller? Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
The property directly to the west, it looks like it's a house and it looks like it's zoned B1. Is that correct?
That is correct. Well, it looks, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it looks like there's more going on on that site than just, there's a variety of buildings in that location. And to be honest, I really don't know much about that piece of property from a historical standpoint.
Okay. And then that one across the street that you mentioned, would that one be R1C, the little tiny strip, sort of surrounded?
By business.
Yes. It's in between a B2 and a?
Yes, I believe so.
B1? Wow.
Between the two, the B1 and B2 on the south side of Waddles.
Mr. Miller, I wondered if you could go into some detail about the fact that, and it mentions it here in the report, about the principal uses that are permitted in B3, which are quite broad compared to what B1 or B2 would allow.
Yes, currently, the subject property is zoned B1. And B1 is our most basic, simple zoning classification for retail, while the B3 zoning district allows for all of the uses permitted in the B2 and B1. So therefore, in the B3, you're allowed mortuary establishments, bus or transit stations, parking garages, sales and showrooms, and incidental repair of recreational vehicles, new and used car sales room, showroom, or office, government offices, or other similar uses. Now, there are also uses permitted subject to special conditions, which include drive-up windows or service facilities accessory to restaurants, drive-up service facilities to principal permitted uses within the B3 apart from restaurants, bowling alley, billard hall, indoor rotary, basically commercial recreation, open-air businesses. And then there are special use approval uses permitted, and those include outdoor sales space for exclusive sale or lease of new and second-hand automobiles, trucks, mobile homes, trailers, or recreational vehicles, motel or hotels, veterinary hospitals, commercial kennels, and automobile repair garages.
Okay. Now, in the documentation, it talks about the fact that the owner is thinking about potential permitted uses, including a learning center. Now, I'm interested in the fact that that is mentioned, but that is not on the list that you just told us about.
Those were the B3 uses.
Right. And secondly, that some of those that are listed under B3 for that size center would have an enormous impact on that general area, being that this has been B1 all along. I did not see a lot of discussion about that in the planning commission minutes. Was there much discussion with that?
No, I think the general feeling is that the size of property and those uses, which potentially could be negative, would be special use approval uses, so therefore there'd be a certain amount of control at the planning commission. But generally, it was felt that the rezoning request was acceptable. I think there is a practical, I shouldn't use that word, practical difficulty. There is a difficult situation if this property is rezoned to B2 in that there are dramatic setbacks, which then would make portions of the building legal non-conforming structures. And that's one of the difficulties in applying the B2 to a site that was B1, because if it was built to B1 standards, as soon as it's zoned B2, you create a non-conforming structure because of the setback required.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Miller. Where's the next B3 zoning closest proximity to this area?
It is not at that neighborhood node.
Nothing?
So, it's not in the immediate, within a mile would be the closest.
Within a mile?
If, and I'm not 100% certain.
I'm not either.
I could look that up.
I've got a follow-up question, too, if I may. B3 is a giant step here, I think. And if we do that, I think some of these surrounding businesses that are zoned B2, B1 now, are likely to come back to us, potentially, and they want the B3 as well. And I think that is in compliance with the general intention of the, of the master plan. Am I correct? I'm thinking if we do this, businesses that are zoned B2 now may want to come back and ask for B1.
Potentially.
Or B3, B3, excuse me.
I mean, that does sound logical, if they want to expand their uses, potential uses permitted on the property. That would be a logical conclusion.
And the opinion of the Planning Commission, if they're willing to do B3 on this, if we move forward, that sets a precedent, I think, to go B3 with other businesses around it, other parcels.
Councilwoman Beltramini, did I see you?
Yes. I understand that the neighborhood nodes, the grand plan, is that there'll be multiple mixed uses so that people can walk there, not take a car, and makes us a much more walkable community. Is it your thought that B3 is the best zoning for neighborhood use, for neighborhood nodes? Because in trying to do the right thing, to start making neighborhood nodes in compliance so that they can really do what they're supposed to do, this sets a precedent for the others in the city.
Well, there are some issues that come up, but when you talk about having B3, but for those of you who don't know, I just came from MML training on Form-Based Code, and the movement is that you should allow all of these uses in one location and control the layout of the building. So, the training that I received today on Form-Based Codes, which we're moving towards in this type of area, would say you should allow all those types of uses, as long as you properly control them. Now, obviously, our zoning ordinance isn't there at, right now. It is a traditional Euclidean zoning ordinance, so is B3 the best zoning district? I can't say that. But on the other hand, I think a property owner who has a full range of potential business uses in that location is very important in these times.
I don't disagree with, with most of that. I think the scariest part is, this is the first half, but not the controlling half. And when you're moving from the Euclidean zoning to an open zoning, baby steps are way more easier to ta, way easier to take. So, that, I've got some thinking to do.
You know, it mentioned that B2 was not suggested because of the difference in the setback requirements, and that would make it legal non-conforming. But the uses in B2 would not be as wide-ranging as they are in B3.
That is correct, Madam Mayor. In fact, you could, I would even say they're not, they have more of a negative impact, or they have more externalities than the ones in the B3. Just to clarify, what happened is that the petitioner did submit a rezoning application that specifically requested B2 or B3, and that was initially advertised at the Planning Commission. However, the petitioner followed up before the public hearing was conducted and specifically then just requested for B3. Now, and I'm going to tread a little bit on Ms. Bloom's territory, I believe that you could have the flexibility to downzone this request and be within legal terms. Now, the problem and the reason why we try to stay away from the B2 zoning district is that you create a different set of problems, and those are the, the non-conforming structures that are created, which is, which is a whole different set of negative impacts, in that if the property is destroyed, there are going to be limits on how they could potentially rebuild. They don't, in a way, they don't have the full property rights of those structures.
And we'll get Mrs. Bloom to clarify on that. Mrs. Bloom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, especially since the application came in both as a B2 and B3, assuming that the property owner would be amenable to having the B2, as opposed to withdrawing. If B3 is not an option, then certainly you could act on that tonight.
Okay. Are there other questions? Councilwoman Kerwin, and then I'll go back, go back to you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, B2 is not an option from the, that was withdrawn, correct?
The petitioner did send a request that B3 be considered, even though the application was submitted and advertised at the Planning Commission as B2 and B3.
So, when the idea is that would, would then the applicant be flexible enough to do this, it doesn't sound like there would be that flexibility. I guess I want to take it, go, did you have response, Mr. Miller? Because of the restrictions under B2 in terms of?
Well, you could potentially, I will say that this city council has rezoned property to B2 and create non-conforming structures. That has happened.
And we can ask the petitioner. I'm assuming the petitioner's going to be here.
Looking, I, I really want to pursue Councilmember Beltramini's best use of, and I'm kind of thinking of different paths. Had we considered in terms of this, of an overlay, like you have done on Rochester Road, where you would have more flexibility in the positions of buildings?
Yes. The Planning Commission and the Planning Department and the City Attorney's Office is working on an overlay zoning district, which would then be applied to the, I don't know how many neighborhood nodes there are. I think there might be 20 of them. And we're in the process of developing those standards. But the difficulty of that is determining where the neighborhood node lays. And each neighborhood node then is going to be reviewed by the Planning Commission with input from the Planning Department to determine the extent of the nodes. Because if you look at the master plan, the nodes are just symmetrical round areas, but in reality, every intersection is different. So, it's going to be a long process before we get to a point. But we are working on an ordinance to allow flexibility in use in these locations, this type of location, basically the major mile roads, the nodes.
And it sounds like, when you attended today on Form-Based Code, that the ideal is to give enough flexibility. However, some of the uses that everyone has a concern with here, you know, whether we had a bus depot at that corner running all the time, or some of these things, which I really don't think would come on that property, however, sit here in the B3, I think raises the red flag for those of us at the table. So, I guess it was a unanimous vote. How did the Planning Commission weigh in on some of those concerns about some of the things that could be sitting there?
Well, generally, their opinion was that they didn't think that there would be such of negative impact to recommend denial of the rezoning.
Okay.
To be quite honest. And I, and I, I'm going to be quite plain to quite admit that the times are changed. The Planning Commission has compassion for a property owner who is, needs to have other types of people rent their area out, their property out. Now, most of those land uses in the B3 that are most objectional or most have the most externalities are special use approval uses, and therefore, there could, there is control through, through that process.
Thank you. Any, any other questions from council here? Councilman Heisbacher?
Yeah, I just wanted to question on what exactly you just closed with about most of the items are special use. And I was looking at page 31 of our agenda where you lay out the different items.
Mm-hmm.
And all of the, what appears to me, all of the higher impact items that will really affect the neighbors require a special use permit, with the exception of a new or used car sales room. Well, a bus station would be quite an impact, but I don't believe they have the space for turning around buses on that site, a practical, practical space. Is there any limitation on a new or used car sales room then? They'd have that by rate?
Yes, principal permitted use. And also, sales and showrooms, and incidental repair of recreational vehicles. But if you know anything about, most recreational vehicle dealers are very, very large pieces of property. This is less than one and a half acres in size.
Yeah, and I doubt they'd want to do that with outdoor, and it doesn't look like the building is tall enough to fit an RV inside, practically speaking. I mean, everything, everything else in B2, plus the few items that are permitted, the only one that really drawing a red flag to me is new and used car sales room. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Mayor?
Yes?
There was an earlier question about the closest B3 zoning, and there is one directly a mile north at the intersection of John R. and Long Lake.
Okay. Thank you. Is the petitioner present?
Yes.
We may have some questions for you. I'm going to ask you to come forward, and then I'll open the public hearing. Mrs. Bloom, should I open the hearing and then call him?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Public hearing declared open?
Okay, very good.
Yes, please give us your name.
My name is Dan DeJonger. I'm with RE/MAX First. I am actually not the petitioner.
Right.
My client is out of-
It's Mrs. Hong.
Mrs. Hong is out of the country right now, so I said I would be present for her. Mr. Miller had said that the one property to the north, I believe there's two, according to the zoning map I pulled off of your city website. And there are some to the south that are zoned B3 right now. The request of Mrs. Hong would be to have the B3 zoning. Basically, if the property were to be torn down for whatever reason, or have to be torn down with setback requirements that are existing now with the city of Troy, it would not enable them to restore the building and comply with the Troy requirements that you have right now. In the economic times that we have right now, Mayor, we have a very difficult time placing tenants in properties. And with this request, the petitioner requested to have the B3 zoning so that we could have a wide range of zoning. That was the reason for the B3 zoning. We have had requests for learning centers that, because of the B1 zoning, we could not place a tenant in the facility, and they ended up renting at the Square Lake and Livernoise location. I'm trying to think of the complex, but they had rented at that location. So, that was one example of that. So, what we'd like to do is just provide a wide range of rental capabilities for prospective tenants with the B3 zoning. I don't think any of the, you know, with what you have right now with the B3, there are some to the north, and there's some to the south here. You already have existing B3 zonings on the map that I see here.
But they're not abutting this, or?
Not abutting this. There's some to the south at Waddles and Rochester on both sides, and then there's some to the north that Mr. Miller had spoke of, which is at, sorry, Long Lake and John R.
Okay. And you're indicating that the folks that were interested in placing a learning center there went to Square Lake and Livernoise?
Square Lake and Livernoise.
And that is the Troy Corners?
Correct.
Location?
Correct.
Would you speak a little bit to the B2 discussion that we had here and that you heard at the Planning Commission?
In regards to the B2, we, the petitioner originally had requested B2 and/or B3, and then, prior to the planning zoning meeting, changed that request to the B3, after understanding that if they were to have to do any change to the building, or have to tear it down for whatever reason, they would be inhibited to do that due to the setback. There's a 200-foot setback requirement off the north of that property, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't think it's that big, no. But it, B2 has a larger setback than, than B1.
Okay. As to the B2, if we had to do a B2 zoning, I don't think, you know, they would prefer to have the B3 zoning, is what she requested.
Okay. Other further questions? Have a petition, the gentleman speaking for the petitioner? Yes, Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Fleming?
Do you know your client's plans if they obtain a B3? Do they have any plans to give that building a facelift or spend any money on it?
Their intention, Mr. Fleming, is to have the exterior painted. For right now, we are working on that to make it more appealing as far as that location. That is one of their intentions, as far as doing a complete facelift, like some of the buildings where they would do a stucco finish note, but they are going to be painting the building. And we have, just to give you an example, we have two properties right now, two units right now. One that has been vacant for over two and a half years. It has not been rented. That's about 2,700 square foot. And then we have another unit that's 1,350 square foot that is not rented. That's been well over a year and a half and has not been rented. So, due to the economic times right now, that's why we are requesting the B3 zoning. But that isn't, we are, we are going to be doing a facelift, a minor facelift on the exterior.
Further questions? We do have some folks in the audience that wish to speak on it, so that we may have some further questions for you.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Killian is here on this item. Someone come forward, please.
Now I can see.
Good evening.
Good evening. I wish to thank the city council and Madam Mayor for allowing me to speak this evening about the rezoning of the Harlan Plaza. My name is Kathy Killian, and I've been a resident of Troy since 1977. I'm very proud to say I am from Troy whenever I'm asked where I live. Troy has a wonderful reputation across this great country because our city is well-maintained. My family and I watched the Harlan Plaza being built in the 1980s, and we would ride our bikes over to the plaza to get videos to watch at home. Some of us age better than others, and unfortunately, the Harlan Plaza has not aged very well. The Harlan Plaza has been forgotten as we all moved into the 21st century. I'm opposed to the rezoning of the Harlan Plaza from B1 to B3. I was ready to list the differences between the various different zonings, but the Planning Department has done that for me, in your packets that you all received, and what was on the agenda and just now. So, that takes me out of that one. The corner of Waddles and John R. at this time does not have any property that is zoned B3. When Rite Aid asked to have a drive-through, they were turned down. Why now? Why this plaza to be zoned B3? Mr. DeJonger of the marketing company stated that the owner changed her mind for, from asking for a B2 and only wants a B3 because of the current economic environment. I read all the paperwork, and nowhere does the current owner state until just this minute that if the plaza has new tenants, the owner will update the plaza from the condition it is in today and bring it into the 21st century. Other Plaza owners around town have updated their plazas. Rochester and Long Lake, where Grusia is now, has a very nice new look and makes that corner of Troy very attractive to people going up and down Rochester Road. The plaza where the secretary has stayed in also has a new front. Those owners have shown their pride in the city of Troy by maintaining their plazas. Maybe Ms. Linda Hong does not have any pride in her plaza because she lives in Southfield and does not have to look at her plaza every day like those residents of Rain Tree where I live that drive up and down Waddles Road. If a tenant moves in, does the tenant- If a tenant moves in, does the tenant really think they would get clients to come? I don't think so. The plaza gives off the feeling of being dirty and unclean. Troy residents probably would not give any new tenants a second thought because of the condition of the plaza. Does the corner really need a taxi cab company or an auto supply or another drive-through drugstore? How about a showroom or repair for recreational vehicles? I feel that allowing the rezoning to B3 is going too far. First, the owner should try and update her plaza, and then maybe she could attract new tenants. The owner is asking the city to allow her to proceed to the head of the class without doing her homework first. First, the owner should update and see what type of businesses she can attract. You need to look inside those buildings that he just talked about that were empty and see, maybe there's a reason the owners don't move in there. If that does not work, then she could try for B2, but did not go directly to B3 without trying to help herself first. The application again indicates the applicant proposes to make the property more marketable by expanding the range of potential permitted uses on the site. We talked about the learning center, and again, we all said the learning center wasn't a B3, it was a B2. However, nowhere does the applicant again state or propose to make the property more marketable by upgrading it. The intent of the B1 local business district is designed to meet the day-to-day convenience, shopping, and service needs of persons residing in adjacent residential areas. Again, no one comes to the Harlem Plaza because of the way it looks. I live in Rain Tree, and B1 zoning is intended for people like myself. That is why the plaza should stay at B1 and not become a B3. B3 general business district, which is designed to provide sites for more diversified business types, require a citywide general market area. That is not going to happen with the Harlem Plaza. I do not feel the Harlem Plaza fits the intent for the city of Troy. Once you open Pandora's box, it's very hard to nail it back shut. There is nothing to say that in three years that part or all of the entire plaza would not be torn down and something else come in there that is more acceptable to the people of the community, Rain Tree and in that area. In conclusion, the owner of the plaza knew what the zoning for the plaza was when she purchased the plaza. No one forced her to buy the plaza. Ms. Hong went fully into the purchase knowing Harlem Plaza was zoned B1. We do not need another Rochester Road on Waddles. Please do not vote to rezone Harlem Plaza to B3. I want to especially thank the city planning department for the help they gave me. I also want to thank the members of city council for responding to my emails. I appreciated the professional way I was treated and that at no time did any member indicate what their feelings for the zoning of the Harlem Plaza was. I especially want to thank Councilman Eisenbacher for taking the time to enlighten me about the B3 zoning of adult storefronts. I always knew Troy was a great place to live, but this even made me feel more truly blessed to feel the protection that's here for all of us in Troy. Again, I've lived here 32 years, and I hope to live here many more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mrs. Killian? Thank you. Is there anyone else that is here on this item? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing and return it to the council table for deliberation.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kirwin?
I know, I was, I am very troubled on making an illegal nonconforming under B2. I find that problematic, and I don't know whether the attorney was going to speak to that again and share some thoughts, but I'd appreciate it.
Mrs. Blum?
It, it is a concern, obviously, to have illegal nonconforming there, but I, is your question whether or not it can be done, or whether or not there's a presidential effect, or what does it mean?
Well, I know that it can, it can be done, and I know that it has an effect, and a long-lasting effect, and I'm simply speaking that from my perspective, that's not an option. I don't want to make another legal nonconforming.
Okay. Any other comments at this time? Councilwoman Beltrini?
Well, I will simply say that I, I understand the desire of the property owner to have as much flexibility as possible. I understand the opinions of our planning commission and our professional planning department to think likewise. I go back to what I said before. To take this leap and offer B3 zoning without the baby step controls, I am very troubled to set this precedent for the 20-odd neighborhood nodes throughout the community because some of them are backed up to way denser residential property that will be more highly affected than the vacant lot to the north. So I, I don't like any of the options here, Mark. I'll be real honest with you, I just don't. I, I would, I don't want to turn it down. If we had controls, then I'd say, okay, fine, it's a good thing, let's pass it, because the more options an owner has that are reasonable, the better off we all are. But today, in, in this light, I, I have great trouble doing this.
Further comments? I have some. When I saw that this was coming forward to go from B1 to B3 and have been to that center mainly to go get the paper, but there's a dry cleaner there, there's a doctor there. There are the kinds of things that, that are supposed to be meeting the needs of the immediate neighbors. There's also a little restaurant, Chinese restaurant that is there. And then there is the shopping center that is immediately to the east that actually is right next to this one, that is, is much newer. But I have concerns about going to B3 for several reasons. First, on the impact on this area itself, and then also about the effect that it would have on neighborhood nodes citywide. I don't think that going from B1 to B3 in this instance will actually meet the needs of what they need for that area. I think fixing up the center so that it's more attractive to folks that would want to come in under B1 would be more appropriate for the area. So I was going to vote to deny this. I wasn't happy with B2 because of the not legal nonconforming use. Councilman Fleming?
Yes, this is a difficult one, and I think our planning commission's in a difficult position, and I think they're making the best decision they can on this and wanting to develop the area and being sympathetic to the, to the property owner. And I appreciate that, especially in this, this environment. I think we really probably need, if we're not going to approve this, we need to give the planning commission more direction because this is going to come up time and time again. And generally, I, I favor the, the property owner. See, if you own the property, you have the rights, and you try to accommodate them. I do have some concerns about this, and as the resident said, Mrs. Killian said, that you probably spend money on this and attract some better businesses and have better success without rezoning. But I'm torn on it, I really am. I could, I could go either way, but I'm really concerned about the precedent we're setting because I believe if we do this, that entire area is going to approach us to be B3. In the long run, that may be the best thing, I don't know. We have to really think about this master plan and what we're doing with each node. But if we do this one piece, I think we are opening ourselves up to more than we may be ready for in this area.
Further comments from council or questions? Miss Councilman Eisenbacher?
Couple of things occurred to me when my colleagues were speaking. Curious about the B2 zoning next door. It looks like their setbacks are even closer on the corner, the two little strip malls that are closer to the corner, directly to the east of the subject property. It appears that their setbacks, just looking at the aerial, aerial view, are smaller than the subject property for the rezoning, and I'm curious if they're legal nonconforming.
Okay, I know it was added, but they have a 75-foot setback from the front and rear, and the, the 75-foot setback is unable to be met with a subject property adjacent to that residential. That's the issue for nonconformity.
It's the sides and the rear then, probably?
Well, the rear up against the single-family residential of the subject property.
Okay. Then my second question is, what is our timing for the zoning ordinance? The last I saw in our council packets and information on the budget, I think it was two years.
The complete rewrite is, is projected to take over three fiscal years.
Wow.
For a comprehensive complete, but we are going to present sections to you as they come up, such as we're working on the node overlays, we're also working on Big Beaver Corridor, and we're also working on the board of zoning appeals section. So we, we will bring sections as we complete them, but we can't complete the whole ordinance in one false swoop. And so in, in the end, we project it's going to take over three fiscal years to complete the total rewrite of the ordinance.
When do you think the section that would cover this property, the nodes and the business would be?
It, it's an on, it's a, it's a big task to analyze each node, and we have presented to the planning commission a method to do that, and so we are starting to work on each of those nodes and present them to the planning commission. We, we have not done that as of yet, I mean, we presented a couple test cases. So I suspect it is going to take three, four months to get through all 20 intersections. And then, once that's done, we need to conduct a public hearing to do a rezone, to, to one, adopt the overlay zoning standards, amend the zoning ordinance, and then we need to rezone and place the overlay zoning district over each of those node areas, which would then require 20 separate, well, we could do it all in one public hearing, but it's 20 intersections. And that, it is, it's a fairly large task. And as we sat down with the planning commission, what we realized is each node has its own characteristics, each of them are different, and it will take, to do it correctly and appropriately, it's going to take some time.
Mrs. Blum?
And it, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. And that answer that I gave, now that I think about it, says it's going to take time. We need to take a closer look at that and develop a schedule to do it.
Mrs. Blum?
Mayor, just another tool in the toolbox that is out there is the conditional rezoning, and that is something short of the whole, you know, rewrite of the zoning ordinance, and it does provide some controls. Of course, as you all know, that has to be initiated by the property owner. They have to make that proposal to you, but if council is concerned about that and is looking for an interim solution, that may be something that the property owner may wish to pursue if, if it's not passed tonight.
And do you know if the property owner had explored the conditional zoning at all or even questioned about it?
I don't recall if we brought it up, but I know that one of the difficulties in utilizing conditional rezoning is if a property owner is on a speculative basis, they don't know what conditions to offer because they don't know what's coming in. Now, they certainly could offer a B3 rezoning and conditions which, and I'm not going to go into detail, but which could eliminate certain negative land uses, but once again, that, the state law is pretty clear. They have to offer those conditions to the city.
Well, even though it's going to take some time for the planning commission to do that about the neighborhood nodes, we all know that good, careful planning for the long term is very important, and even though property owners are interested in having something more immediate for their benefit, we really need to be looking at what is the best thing for the, the community as it moves forward, looking at the impact now, but also in the future. And so I think that even though that's going to take some time, it is, is going to serve us better in the long run. There are some options that are available to this property owner, though, the conditional rezoning, and also the opportunity to fix up the center as it is now with the B1 zoning, see what type of tenants then would come for that. So even if we don't approve the B3 zoning tonight, there still are some options that are available that are more immediate for that person. Somebody else want to make a? Are you signaling or just moving your hands just a little?
It's been said a couple of times, but maybe, and it's up to you, obviously, perhaps a direction to the planning commission in line with what you said, Your Honor, as well as the, the resident, is that you want to assure that we're mindful of the economic times, but you also want to assure that a property owner is not asking for a broader range of uses in lieu of fixing up the property. Maybe that could be a consideration that's considered upon requests like these. Perhaps the council and the planning commission, if they don't have a chance to make a field visit, could have a report by staff, actually accompany the text with photographs of how the parcel looks, different various elevations, and then you can make a judgment for yourself on the property, or if you speak to the condition of his or her property.
Well, I do know that many of the planning commissioners for years and also council members drive to the area themselves to take a look, and some even live close by and see it all the time so that they can be aware. I know that folks are always looking for a quick fix to help them in a situation, but I think that the long view is, is better in this case.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kirwin?
Just a question on procedure. I do wish that the petitioner were here tonight, and I, the question is for Mr. Miller, if I may. I'm wondering if it, it might be possible to postpone and give the petitioner an opportunity to perhaps look at what's happened tonight and consider a, a different offer. That way, we can simply pick up immediately with the petitioner. Did you hear any of it, Mr. Miller?
I, I think, though, that in postponing, I think they, we have to turn either, turn down a zoning and then they come for conditional rezoning. Mr. Miller, would you speak to that?
Mayor, I, I can address the conditional rezoning. That is a new application. They do have to come with their, they have to, so that would be starting over. However, there has been some mention of the B2 and whether or not the petitioner would even be amenable to that. If that's council's direction, then perhaps you, you do want to take some action to maybe put this over to a later date.
Mr. Miller?
Madam Chair, I apologize, I didn't hear the question because the petitioner's representative was mentioning to me that he believes his client would consider B2. And I said, well, he needs to go up and speak to council regarding that.
And, and, and we don't really know if B2 is going to be one that we would consider either in this case. Conditional zoning, rezoning may meet the needs even more so. Because several of us have already spoken against that one, so. Anyway, would someone like to move a resolution?
Sure.
Councilman Eisenbacher?
Statement, and then if we, let's assume that the legal nonconforming were not part of the discussion. B2 is what the adjacent property has, and we're looking at a couple years, and the site is going to be completely rezoned anyways, a couple to a few years. If we go with B2, it allows the site owner to move forward with more options, not the full gamut of options that are available in B3. The risk is, is that there is some sort of catastrophe that damages the building in the meantime, and they aren't able to rebuild. Because once we get to the point where we have neighborhood nodes as codified in our zoning ordinance, most likely this problem will go away with the legal nonconforming. So given the fact that we are moving towards a solution, I'd be happy with a B2. So, given the fact that we are moving towards a solution, I'd be happy with a B2. So for the sake of giving the petitioner a chance at a vote, I'm willing to move it as presented with the change from B3 to B2. Whereas a city is in receipt of a rezoning request from B1 to B2, file number Z-736, as demonstrated by the ordinance, to amend Chapter 39 of the Code of the City of Troy and as illustrated in the attached certificate of survey. Therefore, be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves the proposed rezoning from B1 to B2, and be it finally resolved that Troy City Council hereby amends the zoning district map.
I'll support. Moved by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramini, that we approve the rezoning from B1 to B2 as indicated. Discussion? I'm not in favor of this. Some of you may be, but I would just as soon have the petitioner look at all the options that were mentioned tonight and come back with, I think conditional zoning would be better, rezoning would be better. That's my opinion.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltramini?
I would like to move to postpone this until the petitioner can be present.
Support.
Move by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman Howard that we postpone this item until the petitioner can be present. Do we have a date that we'd like to work towards, or we just want to leave it open? Discussion of the motion to postpone until the petitioner is present? Vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Melchior?
Yes.
Roomfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Motion passes. When the petitioner is present, I'm hoping that in the meanwhile, staff, when they contact her to let her know about this, they'll talk about the different options, and if she has questions about exploring those.
Tell her how to access the plate.
That way, she'll be prepared when she comes. Okay, that concludes that item. There are no postponed items, so we'll go to public comment for items that are not on the agenda. And I'll call on Gary McElmory, our county commissioner in the southeastern part of Troy, for an update. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I just quickly wanted to bring you up to date on a few things that have been going on at the county level. First of all, we've been able to pass for the first time evening meetings. So, starting in July, between July and December, we'll have one night meeting a month as a trial basis to see how many people do attend the meeting. So, anyone who is interested in county government, please come out. It's now available day or night, so. Also, I wanted to mention that I am currently also working on the possibility of webcasting the meetings. Either that or televising them by way of continental, or by way of cable TV. The problem lies in with the county, there's sixty-one communities, all with a different company, and we would have to try to get that on disc and get it out to those people. And then, there's no guarantee that each community would present it on their cable peg channels, so. We're also looking at the possibility of podcasting as well. So hopefully, we can come to some conclusion on that, so we can do that. As you've all mentioned tonight, the hard economic times in our area, I wanted to bring up a couple items that might be helpful to some of your residents. First is, if there are any homeowners out there who are struggling, I've been there, I know. So if you get in a situation where you might be late on a mortgage payment, we have help from Oakland County Housing Counselors that can help you out and hopefully work as a third party to your, with your mortgage company, and try to come to some conclusion and help you out rather than to lose your house and go into foreclosure, so. That number is (248) 858-5402, and that'll get you into the Housing Counselors Department, and they can help you from there. I also wanted to mention that with the stimulus money, Recovery Act money, I've been told that is the wrong word, stimulus, that there is quite a bit of money available for weatherization programs on your homes, that being windows, insulation, caulking, you name it. And they've raised the criteria, so I, as I understand, you can make up to $44,000 a year, a family of four people, and still get full funding for weatherization. So, that's available through Oakland Livingston Human Services, and you can contact them and fill out an application, and I believe you can do that online as well, so. And last, I just wanted to mention, I have with me some cellphones, and what this is, what this is about is ICE, which stands for In Case of Emergency. And it's important that everyone knows that usually right on your contacts on your cellphone, there's an ICE number. And make sure that you put numbers in there. It's very important, so that should you become unconscious, get into an automobile accident, whatever, an officer can grab your phone and press that number and contact somebody that knows your medical background and medical history, so. If you can pass those out and make them available at your clerks, if you need more, let me know, and I'll be happy to get just more of these. That's all. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you, and your son here with you this evening. Thank you. Marvin Reinhardt signed up to speak. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. I like to put a FOIA in, like, I don't really get them, but who was responsible for the solar house out in front of the city?
You mean who actually built it?
Right. Well, according to the internet, it's destroyed. It's no longer good. Okay? Now, I'm just double-checking, because that's only ninety, what, $900,000?
It was not a city-initiated project.
Oh, no, it was probably from the terrorist group, the Chamber of Commerce.
No, it was done through Lawrence Tech and the Chamber, and it was donated here to our property.
But that's still a million dollars that, Troy has lots of, when everybody says we've got hard economic times, I don't believe it. This city wastes money continually, like talking about that thing at Seventeen Mile and John R. The reason we don't have automobile dealerships all over the city of Troy, we got Maple Lawn, and we're losing dealerships out of Maple Lawn. So I figure it's a deliberate attack from the DVA group that I consider criminals, and the Planning Commission attacking Fifteen Mile, taking businesses off Fifteen Mile. You go up and down Fifteen Mile, there's empty businesses all over the place, and they can repair carriages like this. And if the Peacock A Company can't have a truck driving around in that parking lot, how do you think this company's going to have a truck driving around the parking lot at Seventeen in Rochester? And it's amazing, all you guys are covered by O and E insurance, so you can just lie to everybody. You know, you don't have to be concerned. Three of you say yes, four of you say no. I'm surprised you postponed it, myself, because you're so interested in the business in this city and don't worry about the people. Like that dog park that somebody's talking about. People want people to walk in this city, and you're sticking it where nobody can, everybody's going to drive over there. Does that make sense? You want everybody to live on Sixteen Mile, and then you're going to build a dog park on the other side of the city, inside the Clinton watershed, by the way, and people got to get there. And then also, you should mention, Joe, anybody designing buildings in this city, that they better understand what LEEDs, L-E-E-D, because the moment that that cap and trade goes, I've got about thirty buildings we're going to start citing, because, you know, you listen to Patterson up there with this big thing website, we don't have no website in the city of Troy. The first time I seen it, they're setting up something in front of the Lebanese Restaurant there at Fifteen Rochester, and I told the guy, they probably put a listening vice there, because we're not going to get city Oakland-wide, because like the guy says, hard economic times. Well, you guys are thinking about raising the taxes on the people just last meeting, if it wasn't for people like Victor Linneval speaking up, talking about it. So I don't believe hard times in Troy, because wherever I go in Troy, it's just waste upon waste upon waste. You guys can say whatever you want, but I'm hitting all these private foundations on my website, explaining to them, if you send something to Troy, your minds will flush it down the toilet. So you guys have fun. And why don't you bring in some more learning centers? Those are students out of our schools, and our schools can't lose any more homeschools, kids to homeschools. So you're trying to help out a business person to destroy our school system. That's okay, you guys, because I know some people live off the Girls and Boys Club in this city.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on items that are not on the agenda? Audrey Zambrowski? Good evening, Audrey.
Hi. Mayor, I'm sure this is going to go to the city attorney. I have a question. What is the difference between a volunteer dinner for people that volunteer on any committees in the city and a fireman's volunteer dinner that did take place? Could somebody explain that to me?
Well, you know, our policy is to not engage the person that speaks on items that are not on the agenda, but we can bring it up under another, in another matter to inquire and get them, and get it to you.
Why can't you get in, why can't I have an answer on that?
Mrs. Bloom?
I'm sure the lawyer would have one.
Mrs. Bloom, will you respond about why we do not respond during, during the public comment time period?
Generally, Mayor, we appreciate the opportunity to have an opportunity to research an issue, if it is a complicated issue, or to get some facts before presenting it. In addition, it's difficult to respond from the table, because it invites debate from persons who are just issuing the comment, and certainly, we are happy to follow up at a later time.
Thank you.
That's unusual, that people can't have an answer for something. I can understand the volunteer dinner, when it was said that we would have to postpone it because of economic times. I understand it perfectly. But when they had a fireman's dinner, and they're volunteer firemen who get a pension when they decide, when they retire, that I don't understand. And I think it should be put out on the agenda someplace to explain to the people in Troy why this happened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, then we will go to regular business, and let me scroll to see.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Portem Howard?
Well, I just wanted to add, I mean, honestly, I think the answer's pretty simple. The city council made a policy decision, and that's why, there's one and not the other. And we had that discussion during the months leading up to our budget, and it was one of the budget cuts that we made, we kept the one and didn't keep the other.
You know, I'm seeing Bob's name under E1. Was he testing the equipment here on the, on regular business? It says Bob Luxon. I don't know why it would say that on my.
It does not show on mine.
Oh, okay. Well, it does. I thought, that's unusual. Okay, anyway, so there's no one that has signed up on any of the regular business items, so we'll go through them in the order that they appear. And that means the first one is city council appointments. And Mayor Portem Howard, I'll call on you.
Well, I will, I'm on the wrong page here, anyway. I'm going to move forward the appointment, which is, or I should say, the two appointments, which are printed on the agenda, and one is Muriel Rounds to the Historic District Commission, and the other is Leslie Goldenwit to the Historic District Study Committee. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Howard, seconded by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, that we appoint Muriel Rounds to the Historic District Commission and Leslie Goldenwit to the Historic District Study Committee. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Melchior?
Yes.
Roomfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. And on council nominations for Historic District Commission, we have an item provided to us from the Historical Society. Mayor Portem Howard?
And I'll move that. And that is Doris Schecter, if I believe, to the Historic District Commission for a term expiring on April, excuse me, May 15, 2012.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Portem Howard, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramini, that we forward the name nominating Doris Schecter to the Historic District Commission for the term expiring 5/15/2012. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Roomfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes. Motion passes. E3 is to rescind and re-award the contract for hauling and disposable, and disposal. Item four, catch basin sludge and street sweeping.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kirwin?
I'll move that resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? Vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Yes.
Roomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. E4 is a request for authorization to make an unconditional offer to purchase easement for Rochester Road improvements, Torquay to Barclay, and Waddles Road improvements, Bristol to Worthington, and request for authorization to Institute Court Action, Safeway Acquisition Company, and Elsom Incorporated, Fred's Auto Service Center, and Personal IT. We have A and B.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltramini?
I have a question for staff before we do this, please. I appreciate the answer to my question. Thanks bunches. I guess my question is, and since Mr. O'Carry is here, maybe he even can answer, I don't know, or Mr. Murphy. The $1.4 million, did that purchase price take into consideration the fact that this is a degraded site?
I can, because I have received a copy of the appraisal, I can tell you that certainly it is valued as a gas station, and the issue of what's the estimated just compensation is something that will likely, if council moves to initiate a lawsuit to condemn it, that will be decided by a jury. It is not degraded, per se, based on the use it has taken into, I mean, it certainly is obvious that it is a gas station. There is a reservation of the right to hold the owner liable for any environmental cleanup that is required.
But once we buy that right of way, it can't be used as a gas station. So, okay, I get it. I get it.
Thanks.
Your concern is what might be in the soil if you want the gas stations taken out.
Absolutely, and the fact that we're going to have to pay for it.
Right.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
Maybe the question should be, are we going to pay them the purchase price, and then at a later date, try and get reimbursed for the cleanup, or do we subtract the cleanup from the purchase price?
Under the condemnation laws, you're required to pay what the appraised value is, and the appraised value is this amount that is set forth here. But the condemnation statutes do allow for us to reserve the ability to go after them for any environmental cleanup that is required. And so that is what we would reserve, we do routinely reserve the right to do that, and certainly, we're not taking on all of their cleanup responsibilities. They are a gas station if there is. If there is leaking, we will very likely do the testing while we're doing the road project, as part of, part of the road project. But we do not have the liability for getting that cleaned up.
Mayor?
Mayor Potem Howardak?
Wouldn't we want to do the testing before we actually acquire the property?
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Regardless, we need to acquire the property. So the first priority is to acquire the property. At that point, then, we can do the Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmentals that need to take place.
And the follow-up question is, what is the actual number for furniture, excuse me, for fixtures? I've got, in one part of the memo, it says 21,825, and in another, it says 121,765.
What page are you on?
59.
59?
I do believe it is 121. I'm happy to go and get the appraisal, which is in my office, if you'd like me to do that. But I do believe that it is 121.
Because the resolution says 21,825 also.
Yes?
Mayor, I do have a question. Councilman Howardak's done?
I'm done.
Okay. Councilman Eisenbacher?
Would this then, would this taking be similar to the taking that we had at I-75 in Rochester, where we acquired the gas station, and there was environmental degradation underground that's still being monitored?
Yes.
Was this the same process, then, that we went through on that property?
Well, with that property, the Russell property, the Russell gas station, that was one where there was leaking. The gas tanks that were underground had leaked, and that's why the testing was required and is required. I don't know when these tanks were placed. We've got some people with more history than I have at the city. But if there's no leaking from the tanks, then, you know, that may distinguish this.
I don't know the history of the underground work at that property. That gas station's been there for quite some time, but I couldn't tell you if they've done any replacement or repair to those tanks. Back in the early '90s, there was a lot of Michigan underground storage, tank fund money was available, must of a funds to clean up a lot of gas stations. I don't know if they participated or not.
Do you want to take a break while we get the answer to your question? Mayor Potem Howardak?
Sure.
It's in the resolution.
We'll, we'll take a 10-minute, 10-minute break, and then return to this, and then we'll get more.
E five, correct? Uh, the city attorney was able to get our answer for us while we took our break.
Yes, Mayor, it is 121 and we're glad that that, that was caught because certainly they would want the whole $121,000.
So we needed to change the res- is the resolution incorrect?
Yes, the, the resolution needs to be 121 eight twenty-five.
Seven sixty-one.
You got that? Mrs. Bloom?
One twenty-one.
I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Murphy?
No, I was just confirming, one twenty-one eight twenty-five.
That's seven sixty-five.
One twenty-one, okay. Okay, are there other questions on this item? We have an A and a B here and with the change in the amount in the resolution. Do we have a resolution?
I would, I would move them both unless there's someone sitting at the table who's going to want them separated, then I'll do them one at a time. Okay, then I'll move both, um, A and B as corrected, uh, so that the amount, uh, at the, in the B it resolved from A, final line, final amount will be 121 eight twenty-five. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah.
I, I do apologize. Um, it could either be up to 121 eight twenty-five or because this is what would be offered to them, um, the appraisal does have 121 seven sixty-five in here, so I don't know where the other number came from and, and you know, Ms. Petito's not here, so I think, because we don't want to pay them too much for their fixtures, Mayor, we can always come back at a later time.
I don't want to pay them too much.
Is your suggestion then up to 121 eight twenty-five or do you want?
That would certainly give us the protection not having talked with Ms. Petito.
Up to, okay. All right, you're gonna put up to? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramini, that we approve, uh, A and B as corrected. Discussion, uh, Mayor Potem Howard.
All right, could we just have one more clarification on the number because
Right.
There's a different number here and Lori just read a different number.
I know, I saw that quizzical look on your face, uh, Mayor Potem Howard, I figured it was, thank you.
Again, without, uh, Ms. Petito is the, the one who prepared it and what I have here is an appraisal that says, um, one, uh, I'm sorry, just added two, uh, but I don't know, sometimes amendments are made based on after-acquired information, so, uh, so that may have been the reason why she has 121 eight twenty-five in the agenda pack, so to protect, uh, the city's interest in not paying too much, but also to account for, uh, any after-the-fact, uh, increases to value, if you were to have a resolution that says up to 121 eight twenty-five, uh, then that would protect the city's interest.
Okay. No amendment.
That's what it was.
Right.
Resolution.
Is that clear now?
Yep.
Okay, vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Yes.
Brimfield?
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, E five is approval of the 2009, 2010 Troy Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA budget. Do we have a resolution?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Whereas the Troy Local Development Finance Authority recommended approval of the 2009-10 budget, therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby approves the annual budget for the Troy Local Development Finance Authority for fiscal year July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2010.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed and read, discussion?
Mayor?
Uh, Mayor Potem Howard.
Um, let's see here, what is the possibility of, um, distributing to the city council, um, audited financial statements or whatever financial statements Automation Alley prepares so we know what's going on with the money that we give them?
Sure, that's something we, we can ask the alley to provide.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, the vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
No.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. E six, approval of the 2009, 2010 Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority budget.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Whereas the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has adopted and recommends the city council approve its 2009-10 budget, therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby approves the annual budget for the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for fiscal year July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2010.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed and read, discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, E seven, bid waiver for the Troy Community Center Strength Equipment Purchase.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
I will move the resolution as printed with one comment, that, um, concerned that we're getting quite a few items to us that are no bid. And I see you detailed the reasons why this is no bid, but, um, seems like it, the occurrence is going up, it's just a concern to me in general.
Any other?
Second.
Oh, you wanted the answer?
No, 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 you're just, just stating the concern.
Oh, okay.
Support. Moved by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed, discussion, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes, um, let me go to F, consent agenda, there's none requested. Council, do you have any that you want to, um, have exempted?
F seven, I believe, is requested by staff.
F sev- oh, yes, F seven is removed, uh, by the way, so.
And then amended minutes?
Uh, you wanna move with approval with the corrected minutes?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramini, that we approve all the items in the consent agenda with F seven removed and with the city council minutes, uh, as corrected. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Um, we go on to memorandums, council referrals, um, I was the one that asked for H two, the abandoned residential property registration ordinance, um, City of Farmington has that and I asked, uh, Mr. Zurlag to look at, to see, uh, how our ordinances jive with theirs, uh, and you have the report there, uh, it seems it's a recommendation of the staff that we do not need to change our ordinance, we are, the whole idea is that the, the banks will make sure that the property is taken care of when it's foreclosed on, so that the abutting neighborhood is not affected by having property that is not well taken care of, uh, in that time. I noticed on the news, there are several other cities that are looking at that too and making sure, uh, that is, uh, getting done because, uh, it does have an effect on the owners, so. Did anybody else want to comment on either, any of the other items?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
Actually, on this item.
Okay, on, on this one?
Yep. I remember seeing this stuff in our code elsewhere and I'm curious if it would make sense to move it as we do the property maintenance code, because it is a, an important aspect of property maintenance when the property is unoccupied, um, or is it, do you think it's more appropriate where it currently is?
Why don't we have Mark Steinak?
If in the report, the staff was not recommending we change anything because our ordinance is already covered taking care of this, that's, that's what I got. Mr. Steinak?
Madam Mayor, members of council, uh, Mr. Eisenbacher does bring up a new, a point as stated in the memo, a lot of these issues are covered in a number of different ordinances within the city. Part of our proposed update to chapter eighty-two on the property maintenance is to consolidate many of those issues into a single document, uh, and ultimately, our goal is to eliminate or delete entirety, chapter forty-eight on litter and, and some of the other property maintenance issues that are contained within other ordinances and, and focus them all in chapter eighty-two. Uh, they are in the city code as they exist now and as indicated in the memo, with the adoption of the new code consolidating those, I think the language will be much more clear and concise and user-friendly to the property order.
Mayor?
Mayor Potem Howard?
Well, let me ask you something, is there, now bear with my ignorance, and some of it is simply rhetorical because I, I just want, there's a thought process I kinda want to complete here, um, in order to have a, um, inhabitable structure, is there a requirement to not have standing water in a basement?
In response, standing water in the basement would be a violation of the property maintenance code that would indicate that some feature or equipment is not functioning properly, and the property maintenance code does require that all those systems, be it storm sewer and sanitary sewer, be kept in a functioning manner. Uh, now, would that cause a property to be uninhabitable would depend on the time and the duration necessary to get it back in repairable condition. If we had a power outage and a flood in your basement, we wouldn't make you move out of your house because the flooding conditions would be resolved as soon as the power was restored. Uh, if it's a breakage of that equipment and it can't be repaired in a suitable manner, it may cause the property to become uninhabitable, uh, because the furnace may not work or other systems may not work as a, as a result of that.
Well, I guess, you know, um, most folks know that, that I typically like to, um, limit the interference of, of government into people's lives, however, I do believe that there is a health issue when you have a foreclosed property with the utilities clo- turned off, and if there's a basement there and the utilities are closed off for more than, let's say, a few days, it's obvious that it's going to be flooding at some point, especially if you have a number of rain events, and it seems to me that we might have the authority of a city to slap, um, basically a notice of, um, of a building code violation on any foreclosed properties that have their utility shut off for more than, let's say, for example, a certain amount of time, where we can legitimately claim that there, there would be a, um, a threat to someone's health to occupy that building, because this is, this is a, a problem, I've been through a number of homes in the city that have been foreclosed on, and, um, they do have standing water in the basement, or they did before I, I toured the, the, um, the building, and it has an impact on the neighborhood as a whole, and I do think that, uh, unfortunately, I think that the city needs to, um, take this a step further because it is damaging the neighborhoods and it's damaging neighboring property values, and I think it's also something that's leading to potential purchasers because you could have essentially a, a destroyed property on the market because of mold, et cetera.
Wouldn't you think that the banks would be wanting to have the property stay in good condition so they could get their money out of it? Wouldn't it be of their benefit to make sure that they don't have standing water in the basement? Yes, Mr. Murphy?
One would think that to be the case, Mayor, um, however, I will speak a little bit for Mr. Steinak and his code enforcement staff that, uh, the responsiveness of, uh, some of the banks in doing even some of the more simple, uh, code matters has been a, a challenge now that the staff has, I think, done a, a yeoman's task considering the number of, uh, properties that we have seen come onto the, uh, marketplace through foreclosure, and I am pleased that, uh, it took them a little while to get ramped up, but I'm pleased with the, uh, response times that they've been able to accomplish. I'd be more pleased if the banks would actually be much more, uh, responsive on not needing us to call them in the first place.
Right. So you're suggesting we change our ordinance?
No, I, I think that we have the tools, I, I think it's somewhat preliminary, but I, I do, would like to revisit this discussion and, and I, I do think that, you know, we're in, we're in somewhat uncharted territory, and, um, I, I do believe that, that perhaps some more action on our part, and, and clearly there are ways for us to recoup any of our costs that we might expend as well, um, but I, um, would like to revisit this discussion in the future, and I know we have some upcoming discussions about property maintenance codes and what have you, perhaps we can wrap this into that.
Well, the reason why I wanted to explore it is when I saw what Farming, uh, City Farmington had done, I wanted to know if we were doing a similar thing, and then now I see on the news just tonight, there was something about in Warren or somewhere that, uh, they're looking at this, so I think it's something that all cities are looking at, because we have more of a problem with foreclosures than we think we had many, many years, ever. Just maybe even something that MML will, uh, weigh into. Okay, any other items? Okay, how about council comments? Are still on this item, okay. Councilwoman Beltramini?
H one was, um, at my instigation, I asked staff to investigate whether or not this was something we wanted to do, the city of Brighton is the only city in Michigan thus accredited, and so I sent the information to staff and said, see if we want to do it, and I, I have no desire to direct us to do it or not, I think it is entirely up to staff how they can and want to spend the budget, but I do think that the checklist that is provided by APWA on what it takes to get accredited might prove very helpful in creating further efficiencies in our public works department, so I, I would at least add that to the discussion.
Okay, council comments? Nobody has any?
I got something to say.
Okay, Councilwoman Beltramini?
I, and it comes as much from this discussion about the property maintenance, uh, code and abandoned residential property and the like, I want to give kudos to our staff because they have, not in easy times, kept our ordinances kind of ahead. We didn't, unlike many communities in Michigan, we didn't have to do any hoop jumping to allow filmmaking and those sorts of things in our community. We had ordinances in place that allowed that and our people didn't have to learn a whole new way of getting along with this new economic development tool, and much is the same on this abandoned property, that it's all there, it may not be consolidated the way other communities do it, but it's all there and with the new property maintenance code, that's also being done, um, so I, I think that you deserve kudos for that. The other thing I noticed that, in the meeting that I missed, you all discussed the latest issue of the review, there's also a readiness checklist for economic development in there that I thought it might be interesting as council talks about budget issues for next year, and we, I, I have said often that it is the business community that gives us our kind of pin money, so to speak, and so the interests of the residents, of course, always come first, but we have to have that economic development, we've got a vacancy rate out there that's not doing us any good, and we're losing property values and therefore revenue as we speak, so thinking about that checklist as we think about budget priorities might be worth pursuing, that's all.
Any others?
Mayor?
Mayor Potem Howard?
Uh, let's see, uh, Acting City Manager John Zurlag, um, brought to our attention in this memo that was distributed to us today, that, um, we hadn't given staff any direction on a memo that was given to us the previous week, on the eleventh, which was, um, some, a follow-up to discussion we had even before then about some potential changes to our charter, and, um, as, as you all know, a fairly good deal of work goes into preparation for charter amendment changes, and so it's probably a good idea to give, I guess, uh, Mr. Zurlag wanted formal direction from council, perhaps by way of resolution as to whether or not we need to, uh, send us off to the Charter Revision Committee so that the work that staff does is not in vain.
You wish all the items to be sent on to them, or did you have some you changed your mind on?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, well, I'm asking because we, we need to know what we're gonna send off to Charter Revision, because there are reports that went with these. Councilwoman Kerwin?
I, I think it does merit discussion, but maybe not at comments, and I think that, uh, maybe Mayor, Mayor Potem Howard brings it up here just so it doesn't get lost along the way, but, um, there were so many points mentioned that perhaps if we were going to discuss it, we might want to actually put it on for an item for discussion, so we'd all be.
A study item?
Yeah.
Okay, can we have a study on our next, uh, meeting?
Absolutely.
We could do it, tonight is a study item, but, uh, Councilwoman Brimfield, I believe.
We'll be happy to include all previous memoranda, and any questions that you may have in relation thereto will add, uh, to enhance the report as well.
Okay. All right, any other items? Councilwoman Kerwin?
I did appreciate in, um, today's background material, the inclusion of the Master Land Use Plan document and also the, um, Tenants of Smart Growth, so as we were layering in, looking at rezoning, we had a complete, uh, bird's eye view of where we were going as a city and the, the kinds of steps we're making towards there, so that was a great inclusion.
And, uh, Mrs. Bloom gave us an item on the table tonight, uh, did you want us to react to that or just say we approve? You said this was different than the brochure, which would be a shiny copy, this was just a color copy.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I did provide it on the table for you all, it's not the glossy print, but it is a color print, so you'll at least have an idea of the city manager brochure, um, that, uh, has been done by Waters Consulting Group. Um, our time is very short, it does need to get out this week, um, like tomorrow, if at all possible, so, um, I believe that it captures what was, uh, approved before with the long application, if you will, there have been some tweaks to it, obviously there's some color pictures added and, and things like that, so, um, if you do have a chance to look through it, if you have any comments on it, please let me know as soon as possible, and I believe that they are intending to, um, send this out hopefully as soon as tomorrow.
Okay, I'm assuming on the glossy that the white on red is easier to read than here?
It is, and, and
without
It is, and even my, uh, first printout is better than the copies that you have.
Okay, all right, Councilwoman Beltramini?
Madam Mayor, I, I would like to take this home and, and read it and give it some, some time and consideration. I, I will say one thing, though, uh, I'm not sure I'm in love with the red, I, I'm not sure it sends a positive message, and I, I have an issue with that, I really do, I would choose another primary color.
How about blue? I think white on blue is easier to read.
If you want to build sustainable cities, why not green?
Right, Mr. Murphy?
If I may, each, each firm kinda has their standard MO and Waters is red.
I don't like it.
Madam Mayor, madam mayor, and that's
Councilwoman Kerwin?
And perhaps it's because, um, council member wasn't, didn't have the benefit of the one-on-one meetings where Waters had the three sample copies.
I did have a benefit of that, I don't like it.
Okay, this is their branding, I agree, this, this is what they brand with, and so that can be made note, but this is, this, these were the samples that they had sent before, this is what they do.
Any other items?
Mayor?
That are on the table or need to be come forward, uh, Mayor Potem Howard?
Uh, just one brief item, and, and I say this with, uh, all due sincerity, um, when I was elected in 2000, shortly after I took the oath of office, I showed up here with a, a political 2000, shortly after I took the oath of office, I showed up here with a political button on my suit and you were kind enough, along with then-Mayor Jane Stein, to take me aside and kindly told me that, and you probably remember that, actually, it was very good advice, you kindly took, you and she took me aside individually and basically said that, you know, we don't do that, we try to keep this apolitical. And, you know, I was young and, you know, I guess it didn't really occur to me, but after a few seconds of thinking, I quietly took it off and put it in my pocket and I think that was good advice and I've lived on that for nine years. So I was a bit dismayed at the firefighters banquet on Saturday when you, as an official representative of the city council and also as a representative of the city, essentially were recruiting candidates to run against sitting members of the city council from the firefighters body and certainly I would defend to the death your right to do that of your own volition and certainly on your own time, but when you represent us, you speak for us as a body and its body will certainly not put forward a resolution to ask so-and-so to run against so-and-so in the city council, it's inappropriate and so I would kindly ask that if you would keep your recruitment of candidates for any political office, particularly for this body, if you keep those outside of the main of official business, I would greatly appreciate that.
Further comments? If not, we're in a German.